Sweet place.
It's...
That's the one we got him from?
No, it's on the viewership. I'll talk to you about it when we get to that.
It's the boards.
Yes.
Fancy boards.
So we have a chance, there's some federal knowledge.
Are these the boards from Illinois? Are these the boards that they were talking about like Troy was talking about that had them in person?
I don't know if they're the same ones now.
I don't know if they're...
They're about the same price.
I'm not sure what Kirkland has, but this is... We have these very attractive ones. It's a way of changing the chance of some federal knowledge to replace 45. We've been talking about it for a couple of weeks. We have a demo. So these are actually interactive panels. Sixty-five inch.
So you have a demo already?
We have, no, we had a demo. I'll explain, we have one in the district that's a different brand and twice as much as that. But this is, we have Promethean boards all throughout the district. This is the new version of Promethean boards, interactive panel. Looks like a huge sixty-five inch type, TV computer. It must have been federal dollars, but how many were you talking?
Was this part of what we already got or something? Something else, something new?
Okay. And we just got the quote yesterday since we had a meeting and I talked to them. It's got...
Well, yes. State there with boys and a girl. And she's a sweet kid, I mean. She's in a house, she's in a house where she's a sweet kid you've ever met. Once in a while we have her in the house. I love her. Five. I just can't get over her. She used to be a little... Think about it. She's with them. And they play games together. Everything they do is together. Every person.
You know sixteen to thirteen.
No. Yes.
Many of our members will grow. We think we should get the parents to play the part of the family. This meeting will now come to order. First thing we need to do is, Brandon, you want to lead us into place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is OPA. Floor is open. Any discussion?
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to leave the school district to give proper... Does he have the video? Go ahead and play that video. Okay. It's just a video that another board member sent me. I thought it was pretty interesting and had a lot of good stuff in it. Thought it might be something that, if you can get it up, we could play.
Hold on. John, you gonna have to help me here?
Food itself doesn't always get the best reputation. We hear a lot about school lunches in America, and the food itself doesn't always get the best reputation.
The thing about school lunch, I think, um, boiled down to this.
The cheese was always like plasticky. The sicker it was, the more delicious it was.
From Hollywood depictions to real-life memories, the school cafeteria is a quintessential part of American culture. But who decides what food gets put on the tray? And how come one school serves this on a dollar twenty-five budget while another serves this? Why are teachers working at McDonald's for a night? And how does a slice of Domino's pizza meet USDA guidelines? Those are all loaded questions with complicated answers. But if you really boil it down, the answer is money. Lots and lots of money. Today, the 4.9 billion lunches that get sold out in school cafeterias every year make up a multi-billion-dollar industry that makes sure millions of kids are fed. It starts with federal money, but on its way to cafeterias, school districts have to order the meals, and food giants grab a big slice of the school lunch line. But before we get to all of this, so advice we give to school cafeteria, one tray, a tray. Let's go back to the eighteen hundreds. In eighteen fifty-three, the Children's Aid Society of New York started an informal lunch program for its vocational school. But it wasn't until the nineteen thirties that school lunches really caught on in the rest of the country.
Yeah, about the eighteen nineties, you see a real expansion in the role of schools and communities. And they actually start to become social institutions. And so, in addition to basic education, they're also providing health services. And one of the things that happens when, you know, physicians and nurses are working in schools, they start documenting all kinds of cases of things like malnourishment.
In nineteen thirty-five, Congress set aside money for school lunch programs. Not everyone in the community supported the government's efforts to feed kids during the day. Restaurant owners sued school districts for lost business. The courts typically sided in favor of the school's right to operate lunchrooms. And by nineteen forty-one, roughly six million kids were eating food provided by the government. That food came from products farmers had too much of, like pork, dairy, and wheat. A win for both schools and farmers.
In the forties, the federal government passes the National School Lunch Act, and this makes it possible to actually fund the programs predominantly with public money.
National school lunch program in thousands of schools for millions of American children.
By this time, other countries around the world had already developed their own school lunch systems. While the US took the lead from European countries, there was one thing that made school lunches in the US distinctly American: a hint of capitalism.
The fundamental basis for school lunches was a sort of business model. They often adopted like little tokens, like little coins, or use like tickets of some sort that, you know, paying kids would buy, and then kids who were receiving free lunches would be given the ticket. The idea is that you were exchanging something, there was a transaction.
Enter the school lunch lobby. Today, you have groups like the School Nutrition Association and National School Boards Association advocating on behalf of the schools. And corporations like Tyson and PepsiCo show face at meetings to make sure their products are on school districts' minds. Meanwhile, groups like the Food Research Action Center and the Center on Budget Priorities keep a close watch on nutrition. Robert Dorr worked as a commissioner under Mayor Bloomberg, where he administered food assistance programs in New York City. And he's no stranger to the lobbying efforts in the world of government assistance.
It is true that the interests here are not only what's best for local families. The other interests are the various providers of food. This is true in anything we do in government. Anytime the federal government is spending significant dollars on a product, people that sell that product are going to be interested in maximizing that spending.
In nineteen sixty-six, Congress passed the Child Nutrition Act, expanding the school lunch program. In nineteen sixty-nine, about fifteen percent of kids were getting their lunch for free or at a lower price. In fiscal year twenty seventeen, that number had risen to seventy-three percent. That meant that millions of trays needed to be filled every day, and that created a business opportunity.
School lunch programs really start to move away from scratch cooking and toward this kind of factory-prepared meal that's been reheated and then served to them.
And then came the funding fights, which led to the infamous ketchup controversy. In nineteen eighty-one, the Reagan administration wanted to cut one billion dollars in school lunch funding. In order to meet the nutritional guidelines while staying on a budget, the Department of Agriculture got creative and declared ketchup a vegetable. The backlash was so strong, the funding cut was quickly reversed. But ketchup hasn't been the only product to stretch the definition of what makes a vegetable. Even today, some school pizza sauces count as a serving of veggies.
French fries, obviously, are made out of potatoes, and potatoes are a vegetable. That was another defeat, I would say, that the USDA experienced because of industry lobbying.
Yes, fries still count as a veggie. Frozen potato wedges are on the USDA's vegetable list for child nutrition programs. Those bags of frozen foods have to come from somewhere, which is where companies like Tyson come in. The company, valued at more than twenty-one billion dollars, saw the opportunity and acted. Tyson has its own K-12 product catalog of frozen foods made just for school cafeterias. We reached out to Tyson for comment and to see how much of their business comes from its K-12 food products. The company didn't respond, and its K-12 earnings aren't specified in its annual report. But frozen foods aren't the only way to cash in on school lunches. In twenty-fourteen, the USDA came up with something called Smart Snack Guidelines, making the snack line healthier. Which meant if big food companies wanted to keep their products in schools, they had to adapt. Now, nearly every major food manufacturer in the US has a catalog of products custom-made to meet USDA standards.
We felt like kids were getting exposed to these brands, you know, like Frito-Lay brands, and then they would go to the grocery store and want to buy that brand, and it's not the same product. We did a study where we really put the two products side by side. Just looking at that, it's super obvious that the companies really made no effort to distinguish the one they were selling in school versus the one you go buy in the store.
The product on the left labeled "special edition" is sold in schools. It has seven grams of sugar, vitamin C, twenty-five percent. The product on the right, sold in stores, has ten grams of sugar. The vitamin C in this one is just ten percent. And those custom-made foods aren't just in the snack line. Domino's has a special Smart Slice program with pizzas tailored made to meet USDA standards. And the more pizzas schools buy, the more rewards points they rack up. Those can be traded in for Domino's swag and even cafeteria equipment. Domino's told us, quote, "We are proud of our school lunch product. It meets the USDA guidelines for school nutrition standards and is something that kids love to eat. It is also good for the schools, as it is simple for them to serve and keeps lunch participation rates high." It also said that schools make the choice as to whether to serve their pizza branded or unbranded. Remember the SNA, one of the lobbies on behalf of schools? They are listed as a Smart Slice partner. And it's worth mentioning, Domino's, Tyson, and a number of other major food companies are SNA industry members. Meaning they pay money for monthly newsletters, advertising discounts, and access to local legislative contacts. The SNA said, quote, "While many schools are working to increase the amount of freshly-prepared and scratch-made menu items, those with limited equipment and labor resources rely on healthy, pre-prepared foods to ensure students receive balanced meals each day." Corporate money reaches far beyond the lunchroom. It works its way to school sporting events and celebrations through fundraisers. Think of scoreboards, parking lot signs, pizza parties, or that summer reading program. Krispy Kreme sponsors a major fundraising program too. And McDonald's has a big teachers-like fundraising program where teachers come in to work the counter in hopes that their kids come in to see them. It caught a lot of lack from school districts, with LAs ending the program altogether, but some schools still participate. None of those companies returned a request for comment. So why do people care so much? Schools need food, and big companies have it. But the childhood obesity rate has more than tripled since the nineteen seventies. And with roughly thirty million kids getting their lunch from a government-funded program, it raises the question, what responsibility does the government have to make their meals healthy? In twenty-ten, Michelle Obama spearheaded a major change in the system with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act.
We have an obligation to make sure that those meals are as nutritious as possible.
It typed nutrition guidelines for cafeterias across the country, requiring them to serve more fruits and vegetables. At first, its noble intentions were praised, but some took issue with how it actually played out on lunchrooms across the country. Kids throw food away at about the same rate as the rest of America. But after the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, people just started noticing it more.
More kids were taking food. It went up significantly, but the same proportion was getting eaten and thrown away. So more is getting eaten and more is getting thrown away.
Schools seem to be caught in this cycle of a lack of funding, kitchen training, and time. While there are federal regulations, the mandates really come from the schools on a local level. They're the ones ordering and preparing the food, and since it's decentralized, it's hard to know which companies are making the most money and if kids are really getting fed quality meals. But some people are trying to change that on a local level. Dan Gucy is the former head chef of Noma, where he created high-end meals for hundreds of dollars a person. Now, he's running a group called Brigade, working to bring scratch cooking, not just morgue stations, to kitchens on a dollar twenty-five budget. And he's trying to change the reputation of school lunches altogether.
It's almost like it's this rite of passage, like as a student in an institution, like, that's just what you get, you get lousy food.
In May twenty-eighteen, the Trump administration rolled back some of the rules around whole grains, sodium, and flavored milks to give schools more flexibility in their meal planning. The politics, money, and controversy around school lunches aren't going away. But at the end of the day, the kids are the ones it really impacts. And for some, school lunches are the best meal they're going to get throughout the day.
These kids are showing up to school every day, but at home they're not eating, and it makes you rethink everything like holidays, like, oh, three-day weekend, great. Well, that means that these kids aren't eating for three days, or snow days. But that means that not only are these kids not eating, but they're also at home in an environment that's probably not good for them.
Studies have shown that if kids are fed, they perform better at school. And with millions of kids relying on free or low-cost lunches every day, it's a big, important problem to solve.
Thanks, Erin. Yeah, so what I picked up on that, one of the, there's a lot of information, and that was good, but one of the things I picked up on was, it seems to me that the food systems at a local level can adjust to what they need better than if they're restricted by the federal guidelines, which we all are, or by a food service. And it seems, uh... It seems that a board or an administration at a local level can decide things better for themselves than other people or companies.
The thing I picked out of my watch was processed foods. We're supposed to be feeding kids healthy, and we probably have more preservatives than no telling what in that food that we're feeding kids that twenty years from now is going to come up and be a health problem. We don't even know what it is. I honestly think that that's the way to do it, is move away from processed foods into scratch cooking as much as possible. I don't know how much of that's feasible, but that's how we used to do it in the old days. And I think that's probably the solution to making food taste better. I know we take the fat and the sugar, and I mean, the sugar or the salt, the fat out of it, and food doesn't taste good. But there are chemicals and things that you can use to, you know, spice it to make it better. Anyway, I'd like to make the motion to leave the school district to give proper notice to OPA food management to discontinue the agreement of service at the end of the last operating school day before scheduled Christmas break. Furthermore, this motion will move our food service to a district-operated food program, giving the board, the administration, and the chosen food director more flexibility to make decisions based on what is best for the school district. The superintendent will work closely with the president, vice president, and board while implementing the new system and update the entire board of progress as it is being made. Before we get a second on that, when's the last day of school before? The twenty-third?
You're right, Mr. Dalton. It's a Wednesday. Twenty-seventh.
We have a copy of that number.
Twenty-second, twenty-third.
We can't do the sixty-day letter before the last school day, correct? Today's the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-third, so... You've got like fifty-seven days or something like that before the end of the school.
So it'd be at the end of the semester.
Yeah.
You just...
Twenty-second.
You just, you wrote in this in the sixty-day letter, is what you're doing. Me and Adam, you have time before you start it yourself. You have sixty days prior to time you start it yourself, so that's what you're asking.
Yeah, but this motion says a light school day before Christmas, but... Well, it's the last day they'll be serving, and the sixty days won't be up until the day after Christmas or something. I didn't figure that out yet. Something that... We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Is it you? Dana, second. Do we have any discussion?
Will that give us adequate time to get everything in place?
You're asking me?
I'm asking whoever may have to do that.
No, I'm good. I had scheduled two visits to two other schools. And I have one tomorrow and one next week. I don't know, I mean, I'll do the best I can possibly do to get it up and running. I mean, I will, we will feed kids.
Yeah, I have no doubt in that. And I, I just want what's, what's best for these kids. However they get the food, whatever the best, best food we can feed them with our own budget, I think, is good. I just want to make sure that we're given adequate time for this transition.
One thing that helps us right now is we've got three lunches, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're making like two looks on lunches. Of course, I realize that's with OPA's price, we're only paying them so much.
Yeah, we, there's a little bit more expense. We paid them a certain amount, but we have some district employees that would have to be added into that. But, but we are, yeah, correct.
So we have a little bit of wiggle room there where we can, I mean, I don't know how it's going to be implemented, but I would, I would encourage to go out and hire whatever help you need to get it started. As the program works, you're just going to get more efficient and more efficient. And we only have six hundred and some meals right now per day. Well, that's only like fifty percent participation. Correct?
That's what it was in September, yes.
And so?
I don't have, I don't have October none.
And, and to me, fifty percent participation's not where you want to be. But as, if you can get the food to a good quality where people like it, and you get more and more people, you become more and more efficient on certain needles. And your cost per meal's going to come down, I admit it.
The last phone call that I got before I came over here happened to be addressing this. And it seems to be, and this was from someone in the community, asking that we get rid of OPA. And gave some pretty hearty arguments for that. My mother was cafeteria manager back in the day. And they, that was before they brought in organizations like OPA and things like that. And it's really funny, my mother had done that for a lot of years. And the minute that they brought in an organization like OPA, and they started changing what the kids got, and the kids ate, and the kids were thrilled to have, my mother resigned. And she said she couldn't do that to the kids. You know, she, she couldn't validate not giving them things that they were happy and eating. I don't think, I would hate to think that our kids, and I've been told this numerous times, because I've asked this question numerous times, that our kids are throwing so much away that they're going back to the classrooms, and I know in a lot of cases they're eating in lunchrooms now, but they're going, they're going, they're hungry. Because, I don't know about you all, but if I'm hungry, I can't really concentrate on what I'm doing. You know? And I know the kids would be the same way. And I think that sometimes you have to go back old school, despite the fact that I know we're in this great technology age and this whole thing. I think sometimes old school is better. And I think going back to our own cafeteria system, where we are branded, I understand the whole nutritional thing and all this, but where we have a little more control of the people, how the people are treated, how they're paid, and what our students are being fed will be better for the school. And that's what we're all sitting here at five o'clock on a Tuesday night, because we care about kids. And I think that needs to be our priority, and we need to, we need to change. We need, it needs to be changed. We have to do something different, because this isn't working. So that's my two cents.
Any other discussion?
What, whenever we do this, what are we looking at? Most of the equipment is the schools, right?
It is all the schools.
All the schools, so we wouldn't have to, they wouldn't be taking any equipment with them.
We'll have to buy whatever stock food is left. I'll do inventory the last day.
You can choose to buy it or you can make it with whatever you choose to do.
So one or the other. What we can use, we can keep, what we don't want, we can get rid of. But the equipment is ours.
We gotta buy food either way, so that's... Yeah, I just, maybe, just wondering what, what expense that would be.
Any other discussion?
Can I ask a question? Do you have like a game plan for the employees? Who you gonna hire or have you gonna hire?
We'll, we'll get to that in a minute.
Go ahead, okay.
Any other discussion? All those in paper. All those in paper. Four-three, motion carried. Now, there's something we need to discuss. We realize that we have overloaded you once again.
Ah, it'll be all right. It'll be all right. We'll get it.
Well, I ain't gonna forget it.
No, we'll get it.
Oh. Well, uh... Whatever you need to do...
Well, uh, whatever you need to do, if you need to maybe delegate some of your duties to Mr. Dalton, Mr. Dalton delegates some of his duties down the line a little bit.
He's a little busy.
Why, you know, shuffle things around, get some, get some help to do this.
We'll figure it out.
Now, another question. I don't think there's anybody sitting at this table doesn't want all the cafeteria workers to continue to work at the school. And as far as hiring process, the ones that, that work for OPA now, I'm sure we have to do background search on them, correct?
We have background checks on all of them.
Yeah. And the other, the other vetting process for OPA, when, if they come, if they express interest in working for, at a district employee, then we're going to have to do, I'm assuming, another background check and, and whatever.
We have a current background check on, anybody that comes to work for OPA has to do a background check, and they use our code as a district code.
Okay.
So we will not have to do another background check, as long as they haven't broken one.
All right. Interview process.
I've got a question. Are we allowed to discuss this with our contract with him at this point?
I have no idea. I'm just shooting you straight.
I want you to.
I have no idea.
Interview process. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but as they're already working here, I'm not sure they need to go through an interview process. Is there something the board can do to do away with the interview process?
If you give me the right to hire, I need to hire and get it started.
Yep.
And that's up to you.
Do we need a motion on that?
I'll bring in a list.
Everybody good with that? Will that simplify things a little bit?
It will.
Anything else you need?
I don't know.
I know you don't know.
I'll let you know.
I'm telling you. Anything else you need, come and ask.
Okay.
We'll do, you know, whatever, whatever.
I'll have an update for you in November on where we are.
Sounds good.
I can help out too. If you need some help, I'll come in through Christmas break.
Me too.
Okay. I've got an apron and a horn too, you know. Next item on the agenda, tech, does that answer your question, though?
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda, technology.
Before we, I don't know what the board wants on that technology, but can I? You have in front of you, so we have an opportunity through, we, um, so last spring, when we got CARES dollars, we were able to, as everybody knows, we've talked about with title dollars, we've paid teacher salaries, we do that every year through title funds, through classroom reduction, that sort of thing. But we were able to sweep out some of those title dollars and let, and carry them over. Mr. Dalton's in charge of titles, so I just want to make sure I'm saying that correct. So which gave us, and they just, they don't post it until October, so we know what our carryover is, so we had a, we had a pretty good-sized carryover in title dollars. So we've known we needed to do this, John and I, and Wendy and I, and Mr. Dalton and the principals have talked. We have what they call Promethean boards, like a smart board, that's probably what you've heard of, interactive whiteboards in every classroom in the district. But some of them are very old and need to be replaced. So we have an opportunity, it's, they don't make, they still make the old interactive panel, old whiteboard panel, but they have a new interactive panel, and it's sixty-five inches, it's like a big TV is what it looks like. And we went back and forth, we started talking to them, I don't know, two weeks ago, when we found out where our carryover was. Had a demo last week, I argued with them yesterday for about an hour, and we've got a price here for forty-five active panels for a total price of eighty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And we do have that money through title, we're getting our final approval on that. But in order to do that, I would have to have board approval, because it's over the limit that I can spend. But it's another piece of technology that we have an opportunity to replace. I don't want to wait until November to do that.
And anybody wants to see what one looks like, we've got one right now.
Different brand.
It's a different brand, it's the same thing in the same.
It's pretty neat.
Yeah.
Teachers, we had teachers on that yesterday, they were pretty excited about it.
I can only hear positives from, from watching it.
Will the, all the laptops we have right now work with that?
Everything.
Yes. Actually, it doesn't even take a computer.
They, they do it both ways, yeah.
Yeah, you can just do it wirelessly, or you can hook it to your.
iPhone, Android phone, they do.
It's pretty nice they have.
And the teachers like it.
I love everything.
Anyway.
So what you're saying is the amount that this costs, we have the money already that we can use for that, with that amount?
Yes.
For the CARES, with the CARES.
On the, well, it's not CARES funds, but because of the CARES funds, we were able to carry over the title funds. Typically, you're limited to, you can only carry over fifteen percent in a given year. We had waivers because of circumstances from last spring, so basically we have access to these funds.
One time.
One time.
So.
It's a good opportunity to do that.
I think it'd be a good idea, just to probably help during this COVID time problem.
And they have these in stock and ship within a couple of days, we'll be sending them to the PEO.
And is it a big deal to install them?
And take our maintenance guys too.
We need a couple maintenance guys on each one of them.
Yeah, it'll take, it'll take a little while, and we've got forty-five of them there.
No, I just, I didn't know there was a lot to it.
It takes two or three people.
Yeah, it's just a couple of them. Because we'll swap their old boards down, try and do it when they're, when they're in their planning period or something, before we go in real quick. Thirty, forty-five minutes tops for a room.
Yeah.
So we need a motion, then? Okay. I make a motion that we approve the purchase of forty-five active panel, sixty-five inch, for, for a cost of eighty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion has been made to purchase the panels. Do I have a second? Dan seconds? Any discussion? Or should I say any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried seven zero. Next item on the agenda is.
You still have a title?
Oh, yeah, wait a minute. Before we go into, you guys still want to ask Mr. Dalton some questions.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, so could you look into and let us know, you know, is this something that, this type of, these panels and the new computers we're getting, is there a shelf life that you know of? Is, is it something we could trade in after so long and still be of value and upgrade sooner? Or is it best just to run them until they're not good anymore?
Realistically, computer-wise, I'd say our best bet's on about a four-year cycle. So we, Dr. Dahl and I, we've been really working on doing this, so three years ago, we did the high school, two years ago, we did the middle school.
We did the middle school last year.
Well, we have two.
Two years ago.
One by now. Now we're going through to an elementary school. I got a notice today that the laptops are shipping and should be here, we're going to tell you Wednesday, the Wednesday of Thanksgiving, so all the new laptops will be here that week. The docking station for them will be here the thirteenth, they'll ship earlier, because that's how Dale runs stuff.
Desktops are here.
Yeah, and they all come through, so.
Desktops are here.
Desktops are here, and we're in the process of doing them in, the prom books are here, so the teachers have, the elementary school teachers have theirs, and we're starting on the first day tomorrow. And just working our way through, any of the teachers that get the desktops and putting those in now.
So at that four-year term, are these computers just basically good to throw away, or are there, is there any value to them? Do we, do we normally trade them in, or?
Normally, they don't trade them in. We can put them up for auction as a surplus auction, or there's a company that actually pays us a recycle fee to kind of get them, which isn't a whole lot, that they use, especially these people that actually strip the things down, strip the brightest metals out of them and recycle. So, so far, most of the ones we've done have been that, but any of them we've done that too have been fifteen-year-old and have no shelf labels.
Yeah, we can look into, and I can't answer that question. If we keep them a shorter period of time, can we look into getting, having some residual value?
Like at two years, or is there a time when, when we can get, where it would pay off to keep our technology newer and not letting it go to the.
And there are ways to do that. Dr. Dahl talked about that this morning, I mean, there's corporate leases and stuff like that. If we wanted to get into the point where we did something like that, basically, I won't say really, but we leased the devices and it ends up costing us about half what a device it costs new, and then at the end of three-year years of whatever, four-years of whatever we leased it for, they take it back and then we new stuff on a new one. So.
I like that. So would that keep our technology up to date globally?
Yeah, it really would.
That might be something we could look at, just see numbers.
Corporations, corporations in very large school districts do that for the faculty, us being our size and not having the funds that somebody like Springfield does, is kind of hard to throw down a lease where you're making that, here the payment all the time. Because we try to do it every four or five years if we can, just so we've got a year, maybe two years, where we don't have to throw down a large chunk of money on that stuff.
So this year will catch us up, because we were, and that was one of the first things John told me when I got here, hey, we're behind. We need, and so we budgeted, did that next year and started replacing. But we can look at that and just see what the.
Yeah, just look at the numbers.
Outlook looks like it. So we will be caught up now.
And we basically have a free year, maybe two, depending on how the high school and the school.
Yeah.
Good time to look and see if that would be cost effective.
Cost effective.
So, so most part, a computer would cost a lease, what, five hundred dollars or?
About five or six hundred dollars on the lease for the laptops like that then. And like I said, then at the end of the laptop lease, they, they have a gap, but we'll pack them all up as the humans come in and basically ship them back to them on a pile of the box. Any more discussion? I guess the next item on the agenda is bus inspections. I think we had, what, a week, week and a half?
Week and a half ago.
What, we have eight, eight, four districts, four contracts?
All right, James.
Six.
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 Three and three. Thank you.
The only problem, one of the school buses had a seal leak and it's since been repaired, so we're.
Contractor bus had one issue, but I don't know what it was.
Fuel leak.
Fuel leak on it, but it was fixed. Yeah, James fixed our seal. I assume the fuel leak was fixed on the contractor bus.
Yeah.
Got anything else we want to talk about on bus inspections?
So, Mr. Heath, on bus inspections?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Heath, I'm curious as to the placement of the stop-arm cameras on the buses. Why are they placed in such an erratic order on the buses?
Well, that I don't know on that. They, the installers, they've done that, but if you get on your computer and hook into it, it shows everything you need to see. You can see any of the cars or.
Even the one that was facing towards the front of the bus?
Yes.
How would a camera that's pointing toward the front of the bus catch someone going through a stop-arm?
Well, the way they're made, it's just, it's like a three-sixty view. You, it's just a big circle that you can see the whole other side of the road.
Okay, so at this point in time, all the cameras are operational on all the buses?
Yes.
And you are getting, and the feed's working?
Yes.
The DDRs and all that is working on the cameras?
Yes, we take them off.
Okay, thank you.
We had that one that wasn't working, and we replaced the hard drive, and it worked. And James and I checked it, and we let it go run every Thursday, Friday, and Monday, and we checked it on Monday and it worked.
Right.
And we are, the reason they were placed differently is we had two sets of installers. The second set did it right, the first one, so we're still, that's something that he and I, I haven't been on every one of our buses, because that was just a week ago, but he and I are going to get on every one of them and decide if that stop-arm camera needs to be removed, because I want to see it too.
Okay.
The contractors are all exactly the same.
Right.
Because our, our buses, they're just like so erratic, the way they put those on there.
First set of installers.
Yeah, they've done that. I don't know, and they have the YouTube clips, you can see everything you can see.
Okay, that's all.
I think, I think why they've done that on some of those buses, the way they're made, it's harder to run the cables. And that way there, the one that's facing the front of, towards the front of the bus, and they put it up on top, they just run the cable down that groove on the side of the bus, and didn't have to do all that other work of trying to get it down through the poleboard and under the bus.
So, so my other question is this, when they, when we initially approved to putting the cameras on the buses, they were to be one at the front and one at the back and one in the middle. So why would they have put in, put on some of the buses, all of them on the side of the bus? Are you still getting that three hundred and sixty-degree feed from that?
You can see down in the seats and everything.
You can.
You can see what the kids are doing.
They overlap, actually.
The first camera, the last seat, you see in the first camera, the first seat, you see in the next camera, and so on and so forth.
Any more discussion? Next, next item on the agenda, board policy, GCBDA, and I'm assuming that that has to do with the teacher's sick pay. We have a, I don't know if you want to call it controversy or what, but at the first of the school year, the teachers that were on the fifteen-day plan, got fifteen days of sick leave allotted to them, and then when we increased the pay on the ten-day plan, we gave them the opportunity to change, and when they changed, they're losing five days. Floor's open.
Okay. I was under the assumption, and I actually wanted to do this earlier, I've thought about it for years, time was never right. I wanted to do this two months before I did, didn't realize at the time that teachers got paid for their extra sick pay the following year after July first. I thought they would get paid for their sick pay by June the thirtieth, which is actually how I think it should be after I've thought about it. It's, in some ways, neither here nor there, but it seems like they should get paid that year for their sick pay, not the next year. So I guess the teachers that had sick pay from the previous school year got paid in September? Is that correct? For their sick days?
And my understanding is they got those in July, they got that extra.
Well, they got it in July.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay, well, Dr. Dahl told me that there was at least one teacher and maybe more upset because they didn't know about the plan earlier, and they would have kept their days, not got paid for them, and they would have switched them over. I don't see how you can go back and pay someone for sick days that were already, the process was already done with those people, and I'm truly sorry. We voted on this on September the seventeenth. To me, that was a point in time, just like it was frozen at the time. If you had days, then you could bring them over, and if you didn't have days, you could. If you go back and for some reason start paying the person, well, something that happened three months ago, then are you going to go back a year ago, or what, how, how far back are you going to go to make this right? But teachers were told that they were going to lose five days sick pay in order to sign up for this program. Well, technically, the teachers have their sick pay on July first, correct?
Correct. They got their first paycheck on the eighteenth.
And we did this on the seventeenth, and there was no discussion by the board to take those days with them.
So that, that's it. And whatever the board chooses to do, but in my. But in my, what I read to the board in September, I just want to be clear about that, is the question is move the payout from 50 to 50 to a hundred dollars to teachers that accumulate 10 days per year. So my understanding is they are moving to the 10-day plan. Now, whether I missed, like I told you, whether I misinterpreted what you meant, I assume they are moving to the 10-day plan. That's what I read.
On my tip.
Okay.
I want teachers to understand, I know there are a lot of teachers out there, maybe not all, I don't make sure of all of them, but some teachers still like that things don't go just right, they're going to lose their sick pay. I don't want anyone to have any belief that school is going to take away their sick pay. And considering how hard all the teachers are working, the last thing I'm going to do is take away five more days. They just should have had their sick pay. Also, there is a paragraph on page two of our actual policy that I'm going to make a motion to just strike it out. Just sat and looked at it, thought about it, discussed it with some other people. I thought about how can I word this? And there is no way I can word it to where, if a teacher quit during the year, that we were going to take back all those days that she had during that one year. I've seen too many things already that are interpreted in policy that weren't meant to be that way. So as far as I'm concerned, I just strike out that whole paragraph and be done.
Are you talking about that, is that our year 10 years?
Right. Now, I don't feel like we need to make a motion to restore those five days because I don't believe there was ever a vote taking to take those away. Do we have any disagreement there?
Question. Are we going to go back and give the teachers the five days and pay them the difference? The ones that took the money for the days, are we going to pay them the difference between the 30 that they got for the 15 and the 100 that they're going to get for the 10? Or are we just talking about the teachers that moved to the 10-day plan? They can keep their 15 and it's safe, for instance, if a teacher has 30 days built up and got 15 at the beginning of the year and moved to the 10-day plan. If she had 30, well, then she, when she come into this year, she'd had 45. Are we talking about that? Or are we talking about going back and paying the difference between the days they've already taken?
To me, when I thought this up, it was so simple.
It's good.
The only way I know to fix it in the simplest way possible, and to me, the fairest way possible, is if you had days on September 17th, those are your days. And if you're on the 15-day plan and you want to bring those days to another day plan, bring them. So you bring all 15 days that you incurred on July 1st this year, might take away five days. If they got 15 days on July 1st, they get to bring those 15 days into the 100-day plan. Or the 10-day a week plan.
So they, they will make you, so they are on 15 this year, they'll be on 10 next year.
Yeah, they, they had, they had those 15 days.
They, they will, they will have 15 this year. Those teachers that have opted to sign, that they'll have 10 starting next year.
Right.
Okay, my only concern, and again, the board can choose to do what they want to do. Teachers have changed earlier.
I understand that.
And they lost days.
That's, that's the whole problem here.
Those, those prior to me. So I'm just trying.
No, I'm not blaming you for that part of it.
I know you're not. I'm just, I'm trying, I, I had a misunderstanding of what we were doing.
What teacher, what are you talking about, teacher?
So, so since 2007, teachers that were here prior to 2007 because they were on 15-day plans, they've been, they were given two other options, two options since 2007 to move to the 10-day plan and get the higher payout. That's happened twice. Happened once in '07 and sometime in between there.
Those are the only two times they've been able to switch?
Correct.
So everybody knew it was going in the 10.
But, but was it like it is this year? Did they get, did they get their original 15 and then we gave them an opportunity after that?
No, it started the school year.
It started at the school year.
It did. It was done in the spring, so starting, when school started in August, they had 10.
Yeah, correct. Well, let's say we did this in December or January instead of in September. You're now in December or January, are you going to go back and take away five days again? I mean, see what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
I mean, when do you begin to make that? And the only way I know to do it is on that day that we voted on it, they had those days, they're their days, and they can bring it into the program if they want.
And even if we wait till the first of next year, the August to start, they're going to carry the same, they've still got those, they're going to carry them, right?
Correct.
Whether we do it now or wait till then, they're going to carry what they have. It wouldn't be an option to give everybody another opportunity at the end of the school year to stay on 15 days. At the end of the school year, they can switch to 10 so they know what they're doing before the year. Is that, is that a possibility as well?
Well, I don't know. They would be making the decision now, they still get their 15 days. They're not, what Dan's wanting is for them to keep their 15 this year, still be the 100-day, 100 dollars a day. They'd still receive the 100 dollars a day, but they're electing to move. Next year, they would get the 100 dollars. Or next year, they'd only get 10 days. I understand what he's wanting to do.
Well, I still have a question. On the teachers that, let's say the teachers that were on the 50-day program. And when they get to 15 days in July, or the first of August, whenever they got to 15 days, if it bumped them up to, say, 55 days?
They don't get paid for that until next year, until 2021. Because they have 55 going through. If they stay above 50, they'll get paid for it. That'll be June, which I don't care if it's June or July.
Is that in the policy?
I don't know.
I couldn't find it.
That was, it was done that way? I don't know why it was done that way.
I have to say that.
Can you answer that?
Not really. It's a deal that it just doesn't seem like you should be paying teachers next.
Across fiscal years.
Right.
I can't answer that. So they, so you might start the year with 55. And if you don't use any, you're paid 5.
But everybody's switching, but the ones that have signed in 10th, they're switching to the 100-day plan, right?
No, they're switching to the 10-day plan. They, they each, 50 or 100, that is a teacher's individual option.
Okay, so the teachers that are still, that are up there bumping, that go over the 50-day plan by the end of next year, they have over 50 days, then we will pay them for however many days are over 50, 100 dollars a day.
Correct.
Okay. Does everybody understand that?
No, but it's okay.
I'm trying.
I can explain it.
Go for it.
I have to draw pictures. For me, that's how I explain it best.
Draw. Draw a picture.
Whatever the board wants me to do. So.
Do I need to make a motion to? We need to explain this to them.
Thanks a lot. Did you want me to not be honest? I wasn't, I can't bug on someone I don't understand.
Okay, so you had two sick leave policies.
Right.
You had the 15-day plan and the 10-day plan. So if you're on the 10-day plan or the 15-day plan, either one, you can bank 50 days or 100 days. It was your individual option.
Oh, there's, okay, I couldn't get more than 50 and the 100 coming.
Okay, so the 15-day plan, you got 30 dollars a day for anything over and above that, or if you left, for all of them. On the 10-day plan, you got 50 to 50. And we jumped that a couple of years ago, you were on that.
Yes.
So Dan's motion in September moves the 10-day plan to 100 dollars a day instead of 50 to 50. Teachers can still bank 50 or bank 100 as their individual option. It makes the 15-day, people that get 15 days a year are still on the 30 dollars a day payout, either whether it's 50 or 100. It's up to them.
Okay, so explain to me what Dan's wanting to do.
So Dan's, so my, my interpretation of what we were doing, we passed that in September. If they were, if Lowell had 15 days, he was only giving you 30 dollars a day. It made absolutely no sense for him not to choose the 10-day plan because you're getting 1,000 dollars for 10 or 450 for 15. So my, my understanding, whether right or wrong, if they're, they're moving from the 15-day plan to the 10-day plan. So they were giving up five days to move to the 10-day plan.
And your problem is that they're losing five days?
They had those 15 days on July 1st. And in order for them to move over in this year's plan, we took away five days. It said, you never got those five days.
So what is it that you're asking? To give them the five days back?
For this year only.
At 100 dollars for each of those days.
Yeah, but what, normally you do this at the end of the year or the beginning of the year.
Right, because I've been on the computer.
We didn't get it done until September and they were already given the 15 days. The ones that were on the 15-day program were already given the 15 days. And then when they switch over, they lose five days.
Okay, so the ones that have already switched to the 10-day, okay, are they going to be hurt in this in any way?
So, in previous years? Well.
No, no, are they going to be hurt by what we did?
The ones that have already signed the agreement?
Yes.
No, because we haven't taken, we've taken no days away at this point. We've done nothing in payroll. Everybody's still showing the 15 days that was on the 15-day plan because we, I was, Dan brought this to me. And so Kelsey's made no changes.
Okay, so nobody's been hurt by this? Is anyone going to be hurt by us doing this?
The teachers that went from the 15-day plan to the 10-day plan are going to get five days added on 30. Do you have any change?
Um, I didn't count today. We had.
It's employees, it's not just teachers.
It's employees. So we had 37, 37, 38 last week.
Do you know how many have not signed it?
So about 20.
So 37 or 38 people are going to get five more days sick pay, which is what I originally intended to do. And if, otherwise, we're going to get five days taken away because they're moving from the 15-day plan to the 10-day plan.
Okay, but the teacher.
The employees were given the 15 already though, so on their check, what, was it June or July?
No, they, their first check was in September, September 18th.
Showed, showed that they had the 15 days. So Dan is wanting to make sure that we don't take any of that away when they switch over. Is that right, Dan?
Right. Really, they got those 15 days and they were eligible for them on July 1st. But since they get paid for June, July, August at one time, they get three checks in June. The first check they get will be September, where they're paid to actually show up on their paycheck, their sick days. So, but they got those 15 days back on July 1st. And we're, we're talking about, are we going to take 10 days away in order for them to sign up? Or are we going to leave them five days away? Or are we going to?
Let them take what we told them they had, basically.
So we're going to let them have what they had originally, even though they switched to the 10-day plan? Is that, is that what?
That would be incorrect. That's, that's what Mr. Jones wants to do.
Okay, that makes it really a lot simpler, I understand. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Well, since there's so much controversy over it, I'll make, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, I'll make two separate. One for this. I guess the best way to say it is the teachers were told that they were going to lose 10 days when they signed up for the, or, I'm sorry, five days when they signed up for the 100-day plan. And I want to be sure we restore those five days. I don't want any teacher thinking we're going to take away sick pay. And we're going to try to fix policy here to be sure nobody does in the future at any administration or anywhere down the line. I know, I know people in the past that have lost their sick pay. And it angered me. And it wasn't me, it didn't affect me, I mean, at all. But I just don't think it's right. It should be theirs and they should be able to count on it being there. And we just need to make that. So I'll make the motion to restore the five days on the people that switched over to the 15-day plan.
To the 10-day plan?
To the 10, or to the 10.
Okay.
I don't think today has been taken away yet. Let's make the motion to allow the ones on the 15-day plan to carry the 15 days.
For this year.
For this year.
For this year only. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Troy seconds. Any discussion? No discussion? All who's in favor? Motion carried seven zero. Now, you'll have to make another motion.
Okay, I'm going to read the policy in here and this is what I'm going to make the motion to strike. It says, "Employees who sign a contract with upcoming school year and then resign or request to be released from that contract before the school year begins or during that school year shall not be compensated for any accumulated sick leave days. However, a payment to certified employees for unused accumulated sick personal days will be made if a retiring employee has worked for the district 10 years or more and has signed a contract with upcoming school year." And I'm motion, I'm moved to strike that entire paragraph and just eliminate it.
I have no, I don't know when that was put in. Long time ago, I guess.
I know there's some teachers in here in the future. Teachers need to come to board meetings and pay attention to what's being put in policy to be sure that your rights are protected.
And like I said, I don't know when that was adopted. This period, I mean, 2005. Well, the policy was updated in 15. That's been in there since I was here the first time. In the early 2000s.
I mean, I'm not blaming anyone.
I know you're not.
It's just there.
I don't know who, I don't know the reasoning. I assume the reasoning was, earlier notice, let us know if you're leaving earlier.
See, maybe we didn't have the policy in place at that time. You know, teachers have to pay us up to 2,000 dollars if they resign. And now we're going back and saying, well, you've got 100 days of sick pay valued at 10,000 dollars and we're going to take it away because you're not a 10-year teacher. I mean, I just.
Okay, okay. Motion has been made to take out this paragraph as presented. Take out, take this paragraph out as presented. Do we have a second? Troy seconds. Any discussion? Does everybody understand?
Dr. Dahl, you don't see any reason why that's really in there? Does it really not have any point? I mean, is that what we're saying?
I mean, I believe.
I haven't looked at it.
I believe it is for earlier notification. That's what, that, when I read it, that's what I believe the intent was for, earlier notification of if you're leaving the district. But.
Well, not having it put us in a bind or not?
I don't think so. I mean, if they're going to leave, they're going to leave.
See, it's not even equitable because if you've got a teacher that's been here, say, eight years and she's got 80 days of sick pay, she loses all 80 days. But if she used all of her sick pay and doesn't have any, she doesn't lose anything because there's nothing there to do.
Correct.
So it's not even equitable to do that.
Well, on top of that, if she, if they leave early, why?
If they live in ginger light or ice, there's penalty.
Yeah, there's penalty.
They get, they leave, they get paid for their sickness. Yep. Every, every place I've worked since the 80s, if you accumulate a sick day or a vacation day and you leave, they pay you. You don't lose it.
Mr. Dalton didn't.
Maybe you didn't, but most people. I was going to say. Most people are.
What he likes here, he did.
I think, I think there's a lot of places. It won't ever happen again.
Do we go on to get? I got it. I got it. I got it, wait, no.
I think it's to strike that whole paragraph, either, either the parts that's not yellowed.
Yellow.
The whole paragraph. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried seven zero. Troy seconds.
Yeah, Troy second.
I need a motion. I need a motion to adjourn. Martin makes a motion to adjourn. Martin, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried seven zero.
Mr. Ryan? It's six thirty-six.